...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In case of fire, our fire exit is here. Use the stairs. Do not use the elevator as it is not advisable in a fire. Procedures for opening meetings and planning board, planning attendance at the board meetings. Those of the public are on their honor to observe the following precautions. Should you be fully vaccinated, one is not required to wear a mask and social distance. This is a personal choice and should be, should a vaccinated person wish to wear a mask, feel free to do so. Those who have not been fully vaccinated are advised to fully mask for their entire visit to the planning board hearing. They should try to socially distance themselves by standing in the rear of the room at a minimum of six feet from others. Limited chairs are provided in the front for those who are fully vaccinated and feel comfortable sitting together. Please use these precautions.
That's right.
Our first applicant here is Tri-Hardwood, LTD, Lands of Ottoman. Are you present?
Should be.
Timber Harvest, Tri-State Hardwood. Is Kevin Smith, logger, present?
Yep.
Please come forward to present your case. Your name, please?
Kevin Smith. I'm a special office.
What is it that you wish to do?
I want to do a selective timber harvest of approximately 30 acres of property. Quite thick, primarily hemlock getting cut next to it. It's a whole maple tree. The hemlock is actually an eligible bug in a fairly bad sort of take all on them and really overly.
Thank you.
So he will get out most of that and then also pay some money to Hardwood that's insured.
Does any board member have any comments?
Did you personally mark that timber or did you get a forester?
Yes, I did personally go through it. I didn't hire a forester.
Okay, because I noticed there's no flagging on any of the boundaries. And we have a 50-foot buffer.
Yeah.
I was there today. I did notice that mark. You also have it marked on the bottom of the log, so it can be, you know.
Yeah, I did that just though I know. I didn't mark any additional trees to what I already put on the tally that I did.
Right now. And going to be using any water bars on any of the skid trails? We don't, we don't actually have anything that shows where the skid trails are.
I haven't really fully decided on that yet. I'm kind of basing on the easy way to get to, you know, timber and thicker areas, you know, stuff of that nature. It's not really overly heavy, just the very beginning. When you first come into property, there's a grade, which I'm not actually going to be using that road to sit on.
Are you coming out at that location?
I will be more to, I guess, of the, the direction of like Route 52 side. It's quite flat. My mark landing is approximately like 100 feet from Red Star Road. That would be the main loading area.
Yeah. Okay, good.
I'd say probably roughly every 100 or so feet as I go through the property, I'd probably have a skid road that cuts across. That way I can reach all timber basically. All the road I go set down a foot the one way and then the other. I'm trying to put that, you know, putting that on roads in there.
And you're probably, if you're not going to use that existing driveway, you'll probably have to get with the superintendent of highways.
Well, no, I will be using the existing driveway to enter the property. But I'm saying if you, if you were there, you'll see it continues up the hill there. I won't be skidding too much directly down that road where, you know, it's going to pose an issue where we're going to the road. I'm actually going to be going in more to the left.
Okay.
So there are some existing trails in there. I think it was probably ours that I'd say 40 years ago or so by looks of itself. The trails are still kind of there, but they grow in more over and so they need to be freshened up, so.
Okay. And I know, I think he's got a tent up in there and you're not going to be around that or?
No, no. He stays across the stream, but I think he has a tent or shed or four-wheelers or whatever.
Okay. I think we really are lacking some information here and you'll need to bring in a map outlining where you're going to have your skider and your loading area and the road which you plan on using. Entrance and egress run.
That's all required under the code.
It's required under the code and I also, I'm not sure if you're aware of our logging operation worksheet, but you can get one from the building department. But basically it says the applicant will need approval from the county of Ulster Public Works for the access drive loading areas. Or in this case, this would be the town of Horace, so you have to get something from Tony.
Right. The last harvest I did here in a downtown, I came to the meeting and then I.
And then you would need.
And I would go see them and get additional information, whatever, have to take a look at where I'm entering from.
You'll also need a million dollar liability insurance policy naming the town of Horace and co-insured. Workman's compensation and disability and liability must be placed with the town.
Yeah, I don't.
A $300 logging permit will need to be obtained. No clear cutting of the property. No cutting of trees within 50 feet of the property lines and you'll have to mark them with a flag. No stream crossing without department environmental conservation approval. No logging in wetlands. If you are in the wetlands, you need to identify them on your map. All logs shall be loaded 50 feet from the road and no loading on public roads. All skid trails, loading areas shall be graded and seeded when you finish. The property must be kept in a clean and neat manner at all times. All property lines must be flagged and/or staked prior to the issuance of a logging permit to be approved by the code enforcement. So I think you have a little bit of homework to do here.
Yeah, I don't mind going out and doing that, you know, prior to starting.
This is a public hearing, so we'll open it and then keep it open until you come back either next month or the next month back. Do you think you could have all this information for us by next month?
I get to have it. I start off.
You want to check with, you want to get your information, check with the building department that you have everything that you need for the next meeting, which would be on the 17th.
Oh, no. September 23rd.
21st of September would be our next meeting. Is there anyone here from the public that has anything to say on this logging operation? Yes, sir, and your name, please.
Nelson Hatt. Can I step up or?
Sure, either or.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing me out for a second. So I'm a neighbor that busts up against this property and I pretty, just want to make sure that some of the things that you mentioned, that we have some concerns about. Number one, flagging, 50-foot mark is very important. Curious about the type of equipment that's coming up there, you know, the times of the day that you'll be operating and stuff like that, so really just concerned that everything's not according to the book. And then there is just one other concern that you mentioned around wetland. If you walk into that property, there is a lot of swamp and at least, at least the area that's close to my property. So just had some concerns around that. Also wanted to make sure that someone actually, you know, marked it and noticed it and sort of avoided.
So you'll need to prepare that, right?
Checking with the New York State DEC Resource Mapper, there is no wetlands that they control up there and there's no national wetlands where he is going to be. So it's not something that's regulated by either Army Corps of Engineers or New York State DEC.
That was something, honestly, the landowner was in agreement. He didn't want to infringe too far on your property line in case of, you know, in the future he'd like maybe build there or something. He doesn't want to be, you know, looking right at your place or vice versa or whatever, so.
Yeah, fair enough. So just wanted to, you know, let you know, this is just on the court.
No, it's to address everything you said. I'm a very small operation, work pretty much alone. One skider, that's it. I cut everything up by hand on a landowner. Trucks will be minimal, maybe a few times a week. I mean, working time, most of the time it's, you know, seven in the morning, so depending on the day. If it's nice, sometimes I work later because just the way things, then rain and stuff. Generally I'm done by like 4:30, 5:00 o'clock. Weekends, maybe Saturdays, I don't really work Sundays.
Do you have any idea yet how many acres, how many acres you're covering to find for you to be there?
I mean, most of it. It's, like I said, it's extremely thick in there and we're going to cut primarily the hemlock in there because I don't know if you noticed the log or that that branch is 80 feet and it's green about 10. So they're getting pretty well to the point where they need to take it out. There's some that are actually stripped completely, that are just generally the ball overs. That's kind of one of the major reasons we're doing harvest and then along, you know, down the road, we'd like to gain some money or maybe putting in a road or, you know, electric or whatever, you know, stuff like that, et cetera.
Right. If I can just add one other thing. I don't know if this is in the code or outside of the code, but nothing on the weekends, right? As far as working on the weekends, is there a plan to work on the weekends?
I mean, if that's going to be an issue, I'm still like to do the job and I'll have to work around that.
Just a preference, if possible, to avoid weekends.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, it's primarily Monday to Friday unless I get to where like there's just so much rain I can't work and then I get a nice weekend and I haven't worked for too much. You understand that I have to make a living.
We'll continue this in next month. Is there anyone else here for this from the public? If not, I'll entertain a motion from the board to keep the public hearing open.
Okay.
A motion by Dr. Longstein, seconded by Mr. Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
If you can get that mapping that shows the skid.
I just wasn't sure of the last property I logged. I kind of did that after I did the town board meeting.
Well, I don't know how we let you get away with that. But, you know, if an approval is granted, the, we have to be able to give the building department something to look at that shows where you're supposed to be doing your logging and where your skid trails are. So if there's any violations, they have something, you know, concrete in front of them and this goes posted and approved.
Okay. So that, other than that, I, I'm not really needing to paint anything prior to that meeting because the boundary markings and skid roads.
Yeah.
I need, I actually need a, a map that shows on the map where the skid trails are, where the lines are going to be, the 50-foot buffer lines. We're going to have to plan the trees. All of that has to be done before you need complete. So that I can go out there or Frank, or Mr. Wood can go out there and say that this is being done, this is the show on that map where your loading areas are going to be, where your skid trails are, where your trees are going to be, how much torque you're coming on this, this and this. All of that has to be on the map. So really what you want to do is you need to go copy.
I know you're serving that.
I have, I have to where I use it quite often and property lines if I find paint I normally then leave feed, so, you know, and use that as a guide and then I will get to leave it obviously, you know, to get 50 feet plus that way I know for sure I'm on a different property or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I have any more than one landing area.
Nope, just the one that I was explaining and that's it. It's not a used property, so I don't need that. There is one area, 27, I'm not sure. So I'll be glad here. It's not completely.
Okay. So then you and Robin or you and Frank can iron out what you need and we will see you on the 20th.
Very good.
Thank you. Tri-State Hardwood.
Now he's here.
Good evening.
You want to tell us what you're up to?
Sure.
Ted.
I'm Chris Prentice, forester for Lower Hudson Forest Street, representing Tri-State Hardwood on the Ottoman Timber Harvest. Properties located off State Route 209, tax parcel 97.2-2-8. The parcel totals 42.17 acres, of which 24 acres were harvested for the harvest. There are all hardwood trees ranging in size from 12 to 37 inches in diameter, 180, which would be approximately 80s per acre. All trees have been marked with blue paint by a certified forester. Trees will be utilized down to a 10-inch top. The slash and tops will be lopped to a 3 feet high or less. There's a DEC classified stream that runs through the middle of the harvest area. Included in the application is the DEC permit for a temporary stream crossing. We'll be putting in a smaller skider bridge to cross the stream. The bridge will be removed upon completion of the project. There's a 50-foot, no harvest along the boundaries as well as 50-foot on each side of the stream that will not be harvested. The resource mapper also showed that there is, the property is located in an area of archaeological sensitive area. Included in the application is a letter from the state of St. Louis showing that there's, they have no issue with harvest. The access is being made via Route 209. Included in the application is the DOT's permit for temporary driveway. There currently is a driveway there. After some research, found out it was never actually permitted, but the DOT actually can see that it's been there for 25-plus years. So they said out of a formality, they just wanted a temporary driveway. They're putting in a track that's in stone to prevent the highway. On completion of the project, skid trails will be smooth graded, the bridge removed, any BMPs will be implemented, the landing area will be cleaned of debris, smooth for Approximately 12 trucks for the entire project, three to four trucks per week, so I would say somewhere between 10 and 20.
This being a public meeting, is there anybody here for the timber harvest of Lands of Ottoman? Sir, state your name.
My name is Chris Wabberon.
You're. Who? You're.
Chris Wabberon.
Chris Wabberon, sir.
You got him.
I'm here representing my father who owns the property next door to the Olpins. I just have some questions. We had, I think it was last year, we had a little bit of a difference in opinion where the line of property was. Mr. Olpin had marked all the way across my property with posted signs. This was never brought up or anything. We had since rectified it, took just one phone call. We met up, he apologized. I just wanted to express some concern about where on the property, you know, the logging is being placed. Also when about the project. Right?
Well, the expected start time would be sometime, I would imagine it's a counter whereabouts since your father's property.
All property lines need to be marked.
They're all flagged.
And you've flagged the 50 feet in the property.
John, I was out there today and you're, it's pink flagging up.
I saw the pink flagging.
Okay. Okay, so that's the side that borders your property?
That's the side that borders my property.
And it doesn't, that doesn't encroach on you?
No, it doesn't. My only concern is we maintain this property year-round mostly for hunting. This is coming up towards hunting season. Generally we're here mostly during the weekends, you know, working on weekends, but there's going to be some running in October, November. Could potentially ruin a lot of.
No, I completely understand. When does hunting season start?
So October 1st is the start date. And, you know, we have a lot of people that usually come up for, start gun season, regular season, usually November, maybe November, but, you know, it takes some time to pattern and whatnot in the years. We're usually out there October, early November.
How about mid-October? I could tell the contractor, just don't work in them. That'd be good.
I mean, it would definitely help. That's, that's for certain, it would definitely help.
The hope is if the weather holds out and he starts beginning to fix the timber, he should be done by middle of the month. If it rains a lot, then obviously we'll have to extend.
I guess we're, so I'm going to have to, you've been here for a few years, you know, my brother about, you know, you call everybody. Do you have any, any kind of communication?
No, I don't. Here's a card. I have no problem. Call me, email me. I mean, I can't restrict them too much. They have a job. But I'm willing to work, you know, weekends, during hunting season.
May I ask you a question? The address to your property, where is that?
It's the physical address.
Is it 900 or 209? Are you that, that, what is the driveway that goes to that?
What is the driveway? Okay, so I, yes, that.
Like only 10 feet wide?
The driveway that goes back, yes. That's my, that's my driveway. It goes back to my grandmother's property, Carmel Tesla. We own the property in front of her, so the driveway, I guess we are, but they have a wide, but we don't actually use the driveway.
So are you closer to Carmel's driveway? The pine, the pine.
Pine tree in the part of the complex. We're, we're in between the Olins and pine tree. That's our property right there. If you pull into pine tree mode, there's a small.
Right, that was.
There's a small, there's a small storage shed to the right where you pull off the road. That property from the driveway over to the right, going all the way back, that's my property, goes all the way back to the, the center.
Thank you. Okay.
Question, have, we have a 50-foot, no pipe. Does that also apply on property that is under the same ownership or does that disappear? What he said here is he owns the two parcels and it appears that there's no 50-foot setback in the property line on.
Yeah, I have circled on my.
No, he can, he can come up to, right to that property line being that he owns both parcels. It's only 50 foot around the neighbors.
Okay, we had that discussion a few years ago.
I just, I just wanted to, you know, confirm it.
Chris, I did notice you put in about the stream crossing with the DEC, but there's a lot of national wetlands that are covering this property. Do you need a permit from them? I know logging's allowed in the national wetlands and I didn't really see a problem when I was out there, but that you might want to just check because it is on the national inventory.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's never come up before, DEC obviously.
Well, DEC regulates certain one, but then there's the national wetlands and that's usually the Army Corps of Engineers. So you might want to check for that. And you're putting a wood bridge, so the covert, that plastic, old plastic covert there, is that going to be used with that in conjunction? Okay, because I seen that when I walked in.
I, to be honest, I was surprised it's a classic. They told me that was a trout stream. It's not a drop of water.
No, but it can be a seasonal one.
Yeah.
And for spawning season, you could have the water, yes.
Is there anyone here else that wishes to speak about the Lands of Ottoman? Intertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schmoll, second by Erica Alexandria. All in favor?
Aye.
Intertain a motion for CEQA.
I don't know. The father said because of the archaeological issue, but, no, we already have the ship all these ports and that's okay, but, but that's okay. There's no other agencies that we have to.
Okay.
Well, you already have your permission from.
DEC.
DEC. Which really they probably should have done it. You know, but it's the only ones left to give a permit at this point. No, definitely have to be CEQA, which is the.
A type one.
A type one.
Make motion that we be, we clear ourselves the agency. Okay, motion by Mr. Schmoll, second by Mr. Hart. All, vote. Mr. Dr. Longstein. Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schmoll.
Yes.
Mr. Alexandria.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
And I vote yes. On the motion for a logging permit?
No. All you did was declare lead agency.
Yeah, we need to make that. Right?
Yes.
Motion, motion to declare.
I think with it being a type one, you should go through and.
Oh, okay.
And do the answers. What information do we have?
Okay, part two, environmental impact. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adoption of land use plan or zoning regulations? No or small? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use of the industry or use of the land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or the existing infrastructure of mass transit, biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause the increase in use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation, renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public? No. Private wastewater, water supplies? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the historic archaeological agricultural. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the historic archaeological agricultural or aesthetic resources? And we said...
We have a letter from ship house saying that it's not...
Right, so we have a no. Will the proposed action result in the adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, bodies of water, groundwater? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to the environmental resources or human health? No. Out of worsening planning board, the level of...
So you should have...
August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
A motion for a negative deck based on...
Motion for a negative deck.
Submove.
Yes.
On the motion, Dr. Longstein.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schmaltz.
Yes.
Mr. Alexandria.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
And I vote yes. On the motion. Intertain a motion for a timber harvest.
I think in addition to your regular condition with the possibility of the Army Corps of Engineers voting in there, you should just add that they will conform to D E C and federal regulations, which they will. I can first it because I can't make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hart, second by Mr. Wood. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I like to say that is very good.
Yes. Professionally done. No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And the marking was right on to the flagging, I think.
Thank you.
Wagner Farms.
John, I have to talk to the council. I am recusing myself.
Okay, Mr. Wood is recusing himself? Mr. Coen, would you like to give a brief explanation as to where we are, where we're going?
We have the names for...
And maybe introduce everyone?
I'm not sure where we're going, but I can tell you where we're at, I suppose. With me tonight is Jesse Vogel of Great Manning Associates, Traffic. Attorney Marissa Weiss of Woods and Gubitz and Tom Baird of Barf and the Dudeice Noise Engineering. We are four months, we see our application was made in April, it is now August, for a special use permit for an event venue of up to eighteen events as defined by the event venue law that was promulgated in December two thousand twenty. Won't read the definition of the law to you, you already know the definition. I do want to note that a similar application came before this board in January two thousand twenty-one for Yoda Vita Farm. That application came in January after the passing of the town law and was voted six to one to approve it in February, one month later. Total fees for that project incurred by the applicant were two thousand ninety-six dollars. Fees incurred by Patty and me so far are over seven dollars. That is not, does not include being associated with the studies that we've been asked to perform and have performed, including multiple studies in a couple of cases. Since the last meeting and according to the planner's checklist, we provided the additional information that you sought, both on the noise and the traffic, the landscaping and... That's it. Turning radius has been included. Each of the engineers can speak to those areas if you have questions and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
On the, we have had our noise consultant review, Barton Lethoudis, says, so we would entertain comments from her.
We have tonight on Zoom, Mr. Taylor Stern from, from B Lang Associates. He works with Dan Accino and he can, Mr. Stern, can you just say something to make sure we can hear your voice on the speaker? Uh-oh. Wait a second, let me, can you stop again, Taylor? Let me try to just speak. Hold on. The wonders of the...
Yes.
Wonder still quite deep.
Uh, Taylor, could you try to do this yourself again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, yeah, I'm here for the start.
Uh, and you're gonna need to talk now, for some reason my microphone isn't working tonight. Work, dress.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Uh, could you, you sent a response memo a couple of weeks ago. If you could just go over that for the planning board and the publisher here tonight and just...
Sure, you're right, yep. For the office, that memo was sent by our office.
Yes, I guess it was just one of people's things.
Yep, so our office needs, Barton and the Dudeice, that was a study that was done and ultimately it appears that the... Your touch of the big five, I think that's a very legal one, but they did. And we had a comment, it's something that's certainly wrong, I'm trying to get if you all agree with that memo, can you?
Yes, please do.
So, um, one of them that we had considered that we need more ambient, they did analyze the data, because I think there's only one that's done at the baseline of a year and a day, they can help more. Oh, so the only other thing that we have to make is that the neighbors, but it's just that sound is letting files on their data, they have to, they have to file that. And that's kind of being a reference to data, second, apparently that's the, that's the, that's the, that's the data. All state, it's about the property line, I think the property line that analyzed the studies was, um, the growth, there's the, or the... Um, but I think the actual property line, I think, was there, something, that, that also, it's a growth issue because of that, it's like this area and the state and neighbors also, and things, all timing happens. It's not really a separate area for this, it's a, it's really taking even, taking, uh, uh, that, well, it is, it's, I think, um, it's, um, personality, um, and understanding, um, of that. That should be very helpful. And, um, that's really it.
Uh, if you could discuss the mitigations that you recommended, uh, that they had, had not offered in sound mitigation?
Sure, yes, well, they, well, they did offer, um, because they did comply with, it could be helpful, uh, you'll mostly think about noise, kind of, you know, it's a problem, kind of, one way or another, whether, whether you're mitigating it, whether it's, uh, impacting, uh, some of the wetlands, uh, three, uh, after you, uh, put around.
Um, needed to analyze the speaker's, you know, the speaker on the applicant's phone in case, um, so they would, it was possible for maybe the applicant to see if they could use, um, type of speech. Possible, it's things like, you know, there's some things like, we're placing the rotation system here.
Did this or not. But if it's not loud inside and at the property lines, it's gonna be lower. If it's really loud inside, which may or may not have been, then, you know, it's gonna be different at the property. You know, I I wish there was a baseline sound decibels at the barn to compare it to what was going on.
I have a recording. I have a recording of how loud it was already at the meeting, showing the meter at the same time.
At the barn?
No, out of out of the property line.
No, I understand that. I I read the report.
That's right, but yeah, to get one inside, um, it it, the reason why I didn't do it is it did, it did, it wasn't consistent with COVID-19. And that number, um, would have been in the nineties, probably over a hundred many times.
That's okay, because it was inside the barn.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I don't know what it would have been at to compare. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to do it. I wouldn't be able to do it exactly at the same time, unless I had synchronized meters to, because it goes up and down.
Mr. Huang buying two meters.
Right, well, no, he's gonna buy one meter.
Okay.
And the DJ's gonna put it up to where the levels are gonna be. And then he's go outside and make sure that it's at least five decibels, hopefully ten, below that level. Stands there for two or three minutes and makes sure that that level doesn't go here, right here. And then tell the DJ, don't put it higher than six.
Right.
That's it. That's how.
Mr. Lockman, would you ask the sound person to stay on for a few more minutes?
No, Mr. Stern, uh, the chairman, I don't know if you heard him, he asked if he could just stand by for a few minutes. Yeah, no problem. Thanks.
You brought your one of doctors.
I just wanted to add, everything the chairman that a lot of mitigation has been proposed and spoken about. We are more than willing, if we were to entertain any sort of structural, that condition of a critical, including that monitoring and that next work, we installed, um, covered four monitoring that we are, or amended to that iteration, as well as putting, you know, backdoors on the same thing as well. The difference between basically about this is we actually have that work.
Okay, good. Thank you. You brought your traffic study so easier. You might as well give us a brief report.
Um, so, just a little quick manning, uh, last time we were here, we followed to, uh, some of the comments that we drew, um, what, twelve, um, the comments done, we said that, said that all of the following practice, that, um, like, that's a concern about trip generation assessment. Um, if we talk about the, uh, you know, how that trip generated by the site, uh, relates to the area of roadways, um, we do agree that there is an increase in traffic as people attend the event. Um, you know, but we also agree that it's not a capacity issue. Um, the most recent comment says that we should have a traffic management plan to make sure that visitors from downtown or they're able to enter by the site, not having to turn around in other people's driveways. Uh, we had submitted response earlier today regarding that. Um, you know, our equal twelve, uh, March twenty-fifth special use permit application to include a traffic parking section, which is also revised on April first, and that means traffic for the parking on site as well. Um, kind of a high level, how parking is managed using code signs. Um, we are proposing, uh, a little additional detail to make sure that the board is comfortable with that. Um, essentially what that would be is the cones on the Ulster Heights Road driveways to direct traffic to Marcus Road. So, as, uh, people attending the, let's say, see those driveways are closed, um, they would then be flagged by a flagger at the Marcus Road intersection to the Marcus Road driveway, where a second flagger would load them into the lot because that lot is efficiently loaded. Uh, the flaggers would be communication by radio, um, to coordinate. And as Marcus Road lot fills up, then, um, the flagger from the Marcus Road, Ulster Heights Road intersection, move cones from the Porsche driveway, start directing people into that lot there, filling up the driveways and barns. And, um, uh, once Marcus Road lot's filled up, that second flagger would come over and, uh, just continue filling, uh, based by the barn, and then interior should be, uh, to the driveways.
Are you proposing any signage or?
Uh, yeah, so we do include with cones on the driveways, two standard signs that would direct, uh, the 20 to Marcus Road intersection, where they could also be picked up by the flagger. Um, you know, also, having been out there doing the site distance assessment, you think that as you approach the driveway, you can see the intersection of Marcus Road and Ulster Heights Road, and probably very clearly see the flagger. So, no one should be missing the site and turn them around elsewhere.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I I thought you didn't say that we filmed in private.
Uh, we added that additional detail in today's submission. So, the initial, um, submission said it's managed using cones and signage, um, but now we're specifying where those cones and signage would be. There any questions?
Well, no in private, but, no.
No, the driveways seem to the same.
I understand. I just wanted to be clear.
Yes, because we're not putting anyone on everyone else's property.
And and speaking of traffic, so the Ulster County issued a traffic permit, took this document, again, it was a red X and Schedule A. Can you elaborate on that?
I look for a way to talk.
Okay. Yeah, so if the state had to check, you know, check there's a Schedule A, the last line before the sign.
I believe that refers to no county roadways that exist during events and not will be permitted. Not technical.
So, Schedule A, you do the schedules.
Well, are you referring to the July sixth?
I don't remember the date.
Sorry.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, July.
Yes, that's right.
Schedule A on the bottom?
It was approved by the department on July.
Yes, refer to Schedule A for special conditions if box is checked.
Yeah.
And box is checked.
The president sees this.
I read myself.
I I need it. I need it back. You're more than welcome to see it.
I was looking for a copy to get to.
Yeah, you know, I don't have a copy of Schedule A.
Uh, it's possible we didn't receive any.
Yeah, I would note that it's on page two of the document.
Yeah. We will.
Maybe like our login permits, you know, we had a form and they just didn't include it.
Yeah, this was the only one we received, so.
It may have been that they require the, um, certificate of liability insurance and a certificate of adaptation exemption, which were, I that, I believe they were the Schedule As that they required, and I completely sent them in order to get the permit.
So, do you have anything that says Schedule A on it? To make sure we know what, what's necessary?
I will, we'll have to determine that and get it to you or make it to you.
Ulster County Department of Public Works.
I mean, it's easy enough to find out what they had, uh, if, but.
I think they issued it. It wasn't that big.
Right, but they would not have issued it, but they needed.
Okay, then, Mr. Lockman.
I don't know whether this is, whether you want to do this now or or play on and maybe, but there were two other issues that I had raised in my memorandum. Uh, one is the number of events, uh, per year. Um, we haven't discussed that yet by the applicant, uh, at first, um, at the post eighteen. And then in their recent statements, they said they could be willing to do work. I know the board may want to discuss that, that either now or later tonight. And the other issue has to do with the planting that the county, at, uh, first, my memorandum might ask for plantings along the entire length of Ulster Heights Road in front of the parking lot, gravel parking lot as well as in front of the grassy area, for, quote, parking, that's a U-shaped driveway right in front of the barn. And the county in their GML referral letter, one of their, uh, recommended modifications was to have planting along the entire length of Ulster Heights Road. So, uh.
What was it required, not recommended?
Well, yeah, in their, it's both recommended, but it's a requirement.
Right.
Uh, uh, you have to do it or override it. And the point is, is that the applicant has stated that they don't wish to put any plantings right in that stretch in front of the grassy area. They like the look of it the way it is. But if the planning board, uh, just go along with that, you'd be required to override comment four of the GML letter we require to.
So, let's.
Two issues.
True. Sure. Go ahead.
I do not believe that the map includes replantings that were put there recently, which are three maple trees in the front of the grassy area. So, what it appears to to look like right now is nothing there. And last year, we put in three plants, and I don't know why, just that we had that if we wanted to. But there are three maple trees in the front, as pictures of the Wager Farm showed decades ago, and we want to put it back to them. So, those three trees should help mitigate this question, in my opinion, to, instead of a row of less attractive trucks in a parking area that's going to be used last but unlikely to be used at all. And it would really impair the character of the property, if anybody's been by. Maple trees are much more, uh, suitable for that, and they are already in place.
Yeah, I I took a look at that also, and, um, if, there there's two concerns here. One is missing the site and turning around in driveways. You go ahead and put plantings there, and now the site becomes less visible, and you're gonna have more problems with traffic not knowing where they're going. Um, the other thing is, is that the parking there in that U-shaped, uh, grassy area, uh, the parking is, all the headlights are parking, are towards the barn, they're not flashing up across the road to the neighbors, which was a concern that that the neighbors had. Uh, and the current, uh, planting details looks like the the other two parking lots that would have that sort of, uh, headlights and so on coming across the road, except for the driveway, which you can't put flag, flag into drive. Um, those plantings are in place. So, I think the intent was keep as much headlight flare on the property and off the adjoining property, which I think this is done. Um, but again, I don't, I don't know that we, we, do we have a, I don't even think we have a super majority here, do we?
Yes, you do. You have five and you have five.
All right. I I just wasn't, because I worry we're missing some members and and and.
If you wanted to make a decision on that tonight, you'd all have to vote yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's.
And you can, you can do, you can do a vote to override, uh, county requirements from the GML, at any point in the process.
Right, so, yeah.
I would like to open this to the public. I want to keep it to the issues that are prevalent to the application. Keeping it civil, and if one person would like to identify, I think the public has a lawyer, who could purposely run down a list of items for the public. If the public has anything new or something that was missed, we would entertain any information from them with an idea of keeping it to two minutes, but we will let your legal representative have as much time as he wishes. Go ahead. And your name again, please.
My name is Neil Frischberg. I am a fabric company in Frischberg, um, and represent the local neighbors. So, um, the initial issue, legal issue, I think we need to resolve as to whether this is an accessory use. Because the New York Code, it does only give the event permit if it's accessory use. And under section one point four, four, a point four dash four, accessory use is a supporting use. Building, structure, customary incidental to, and located on the same lot occupied by the main used building and structure. This is not a supporting use. This is a use that's bundled with, uh, the building, so that when someone rents the building, they rent the barn, uh, provided of an old antitrust case, and they, I remember Microsoft used to bundle Windows with Windows Explorer and claim they can separate these two. And in the antitrust case, something I got off, no, I figured it out, you can separate it. But here, it is bundled with the building, so it's not an accessory use, it's not a supporting use in the New York Code. It's simply part of the package. He advertises, he doesn't advertise the building and the barn, he advertises the package. Uh, when he rents it, he does not rent the building and the barn, he rents the whole thing. It's not supporting, it's all one big package, so it's not a supporting use, it's not supporting the building. What lies in the shed on my property is a supporting use. I live in my, I live in my house, the shed is a supporting accessory use, that's what it is, an accessory use. I don't live in the shed. So, it's not as though your your laws, I read it, that was designed so that if somebody wants to live in the house, and they had, maybe the barn or something that they wanted to rent out as part of the time they could. But that's not what this is. This is a, this is a house that nobody, that's rented out and bundled to the barn. So, there's no, no, um, supporting use, and therefore, the the application should be intengated out at all. And you have to make that determination first, according to the law, in the application, as to whether or not this is an accessory use, because in the New York Code, in the law, you only give a permit for an accessory use. Not accessory use, you can't give the permit. So, that that's, to me, that's a fresh old issue that you you need to resolve. And he suggests that it's not, it's not, it's not, uh, an accessory use, it's a, it's a primary use, to be certain, because, um, that's how he's making money. Um, second, I'm sorry. The other issue you have to, seems to me that you have to resolve is whether you should intang the application where this applicant has filed his own laws. You know, for example, there's a, there's a letter from your attorney that you always quote on the, you want, telling him that he can't have any from the wedding. Well, this Saturday, I have another wedding. And despite the laws, and despite the fact that the building inspector, the property inspector, I don't know the law, I don't know the building inspector, that's definitely, um, simply does not issue any violations. But this man comes to you with the idea that he should be able to have a special permit even though he violates your laws. And part of this discussion is, well, he's gonna be a good citizen, he's gonna watch, he's gonna monitor the decibel. He's gonna make sure it's, well, he hasn't demonstrated, he hasn't demonstrated that propensity, he hasn't demonstrated a level of honesty and integrity that this planning board should have, that that he, this planning board should believe that he's gonna do the right thing, and the opposite, he does what he wants. He wants a wedding, he gets a wedding, he doesn't care, uh, nobody violates him. We wrote the letter, your constituents have written the letter to the building inspector, asking, you know, telling her that if she doesn't do it, they have the right under your laws, you should start an, start an action against it, and he will. Because you're simply not enforcing your laws, not you, I don't mean you personally, but the building inspector's not enforcing the law. He comes here, he's just a, a man. Um, I agree with the the sound person, the noise study needs to be done. Um, as your, as your sound expert pointed out, that the sound has to be taken to the nearest sound source, it is not. So, there's sounds, there's sounds that need to be done. Um, except specifically, the sound levels were not measured from Mr. Lawrence's property, um, and so, the sound study is insufficient. We also, the planning board member that says, you wanna know how much, how much noise is inside the barn? Um, and, uh, to figure out how loud it really is. Um, the other issue is, you know, there's this, seems to be this assumption that Mr. Coombs is gonna be around for these days. He's not. Um, he's in the process of selling the property. I I'm told that there's a pending sale for this property. So, to the extent that he relies on Mr. Coombs, again, to do the right thing, he's not gonna be the owner. So, you're gonna give, you're gonna give a, you're gonna give a special permit, or he's asking for a special permit, in theory, and you're gonna rely on him to monitor the sound, he's not gonna be around because he's not, he's not owning the property, pending sale. People are spoken here. Um, um, regarding that. So, he's not, he's not gonna, he's not gonna be doing anything, uh, to 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 help the situation. Um, the traffic study, there's too much happening. I mean, here you have, here you have, um, they had eighty people, I think, at the last wedding, wedding, that he studied. He's asking for a hundred and ten. So, already, the traffic study is, well, it was that only, they only measured eighty, eighty percent of of what's gonna, of what he's asking for. But two, these are small roads, you've got all these people making right turns, left turns, accidentally waiting for happy. These people who live in this area, if you call it, um, pleasant, uh, area, and not to watch all this traffic from back and forth. And I get it, I think you're trying to drive economically, drive sort of, um, making economically viable. But here, you're making it economically viable at the expense of the people, of your constituents, for relying on you to make sure that that there's a livable, um. That's pretty much all I have right now, I have something for the, all that.
Your name, please.
Georgiana Lefk.
Georgie.
Georgiana.
Georgiana.
Um, I'm not an expert, I'm not a lawyer, or I'm none of those things. I'm a person who, um, was born and raised in New York. So, if you allow me the opportunity, that might be something to do, I guess, I might just stay on the line and not get that, okay? Uh, for the record, my name is Georgiana Lefk. My husband and I are both graduates of that one little school, and are members of the Ulster Heights Methodist Church. In fact, my husband attended a school, a one-room school in Ulster Heights, so you can say we go back. Back in the day, when Ulster Heights was a happening place, places like the Western View was in full swing, and the Ulster Heights Lake drew many people to the area and the forest, the boarding house now restored known as Wager Farm. For health reasons, we had to relocate to Florida, but in the summers, we returned to the area we call home. We have had the privilege of renting Wager Farm for four years. It's a hands-on, well-managed, well-cared-for place to lodge. We went on vacation to different places all the time, and, you know, this place is truly a gem, and it's in your town and the town of my home. The beauty speaks for itself. Our experience as renters was exceptional. Rocking on the, in the rocking chairs on the porch and listening to the stream, and at many times, very silent, and that's all you heard. It reminded you what the busy farm and boarding house was in the day. The only negative thing we experienced while renting there was the noise caused by the bus that goes up that road and down that road, seven days a week, at all different times, for eight to ten weeks. And I can tell you personally that they wake you up in the middle of the night. They come up the hill, they have that big turn, and they have to gear down, that I'm sure you all, I don't have a G T R drive. I need a horse. But in fact, that's what happened. And that's the noise that, as a renter or somebody in that area, you're regardless of such an event, hears if you live in that area. And at the same time, if you listen close, you hear the speaker system with the various different camps in the area. We, and we realized while we rented there, that these noises that were caused by automobiles and trucks and buses going up and down the road was nothing that Wager Farms could perform at all, nor I know for you. In the big picture, municipalities can only hope for Wager Farms tenfold. The blight and the destruction of the places in this area, whether it be Sullivan County, Ulster County, is horrendous. As you all know, and I know, properties are going off the tax roll every year tenfold, and the rest of the taxpayers are picking up the cost to operate local boats. There must be a way to grant a limited number of special events to be held at Wager Farm with reasonable restrictions. I don't say you do a car lodge, I understand how that works. You just have to look around to see what other possibilities could, I mean, people, whether present owners own it, or the new, if it's sold, people own it, they're investing a lot of money there for not only their benefit, yes, they may, but I would love to have Wager Farm as my location. So, it's close, in my opinion, my husband's opinion, who are Ulster Heights residents, whether we're there or not at this point. Um, we are, uh, we believe Wager Farms is a good neighbor. We believe it's an asset to the town, and we hope you take all of that into consideration in your consideration.
May I ask you a question? Do you rent there?
I don't currently. I, we did for four years, and we rented basically for the summer, sometimes, um, depending upon when we could come up. My husband has health issues, and so, it required us not to be able to come here, but we still come to the area. We're here now, we happen to be in the town of Manicake right now, um, and God willing, and the rich don't rise, we'll come back every second.
When you rented there, was the barn considered part of your rent?
You know, uh, I really, uh, I don't think so. I don't know. Honestly, we rented part of the big house, um.
Not all of the big house?
Pardon me?
Not all of the big house, certain bedrooms or one or two bedrooms?
We rented the side toward the barn.
Okay.
Um, of the big house.
Did you have kitchen?
Pardon me?
Kitchen usage?
Uh, yes, we did. Uh, I mean, for us, it was wonderful, it was guaranteed, um, we never had any issues whatsoever ever. I did listen, um, to some of the things that were maybe being suggestive, in particular, the planning along the front stairs of the house. One of the things that makes that memorable is that they have tried to make a reference of what was, and I loved it. And in that house, you go through, they were privileged enough to have different pictures of what was. And my husband, more than I, um, can remember a whole lot. And Wager, uh, the farm itself, you know, when all of, you know, was extensive, it was a cross the road, it was a boarding house. And it was across the road and up the road, and I'm a non-deductible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else? Your name, please?
Diane Goodwin, from fabric company in Frischberg, a quick point about the noise study. Um, I wanted to address that it, there were no sound levels measured at the posted property line, and I, I know, uh, Taylor Stern mentioned that the property line was an easement, it's not an easement. Mr. Lawrence's property is not an easement at all, uh, there's an envelope trust asset, so that it is not an easement. Um, and I know Mr. Barry said he did, you know, he did a little test to do it, because it's on the, he put the side of the barn rather than. rather than where the doors were facing across the street. But if the doors are closed, what difference does it make? So, I would suggest that the noise study be done on Mr. Lawrence's property line.
It's public here.
Your name, please?
I want to read this, but first, I just want to address the statements that David. I live on the Ford's Farm right next to it. And I owned a restaurant and bar, and I owned it for twenty-five years. And we had DJs, we had fans, all of them. We contained in a, in a, in a corner bar, that all the doors were closed. We had good insulation, and we still had complaints filed on the P W, on the neighbors. You just can't contain the sound. Now, this particular wedding they had there was sort of like a contained wedding. It wasn't a normal wedding. And little Coombs obviously made certain arrangements to have everything sort of toned down. I've listened from my deck, walking to the bar in front of our house, all the songs. I could tell what they were playing, what they were leading into. I couldn't hear that this particular time. I still heard the music and everything that was going on, but it wasn't real. I just want to make that statement. What I was trying to do is just give you a little history of what I've done here in this farm. My wife and I, and then, have a home in a Ford's Farm, has little kids. Next, we performed, we're both in our seventies now, and we both retired last year. I owned this property for fifty-two years. Fifty-two years. Never had any issues, no problems, no complaints. My neighbors were a school teacher, Mr. Ellison, Mr. Bay, Mr. Porcher, who's still there. Mr. Exner and Conrad F. No issue, ever, once. All of a sudden, we go off. In nineteen sixty-nine, owned what, what, we were rural area. We built a dream house, overlooking the valley in two thousand, two thousand and five. This is a perfect location to have a quiet, serene environment, close proximity to our horses. We breed and train rabid horses. National level of horses that need quiet and sort of like environment and peaceful surroundings. Due to the mentality of Wager Farms, our rural serene environment is negatively impacted. Our horses are very sensitive animals. Loud noises, unfamiliar sounds contribute to serious health risks. Those cooms have applied for a special event on Wager Farm. However, this facility is located in the rural area. He has operated the facility without any permanent ram. His total attention towards the neighbors is disgraceful. His objective in all this is to sell the property. And then he gets out of the equation. He's advertising hanging on walls, more to get to our business, to his seller. Having no access from this property to the floor, he is in a fight. Trying to get into the floor by approaching on the warrants and rapier property. This would be a tremendous liability for both the property, we feel that he has ended, would. And do destruct our personal lives, as well as the lives of our horses and our neighbors. We strongly oppose the rule of the old homes and that this property becomes illegal eventually. Like everyone on the road. My son wants to build a home next to me, which is a great dream to have your child live next to you. So, I have five acres of pot there that I gave him. He was in the process of plans to build, and it would be the same view that I had when we cut the trees down. If you're familiar with my property, it's a tremendous view up there. He is scared to build up, building a house now, having a wedding venue right next door. And that is sincerely me and him. So, that's a tremendous concern for me.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else wishing to say something?
I think, um, I had a whole speech prepared for tonight, but you guys really want to hear it. And I was just in the middle of my house, this DJ, um, you know, the sound gentleman stated that barn doors should be shut. At the wedding, this is the picture, at four thirty-six, barn doors open. Four forty-four, barn doors open. Four fifty-nine, barn doors open. Six eleven, barn doors, I keep on going. The barn doors were open all night long that night. They were open all night long Friday night when I had a listen to rockabilly coming from the barn. That was glaring from where you are. So, he's, he's on going, and I just don't know what else to say, besides the fact that he's not being taken out. So, I guess I'm going to focus tonight, so that you guys know a little bit of what's happening. So, at the wedding, we were supposed to get video proof that this wedding was going on. While my husband was videotaping a portion of the wedding, one of the security guards came up, and I hope he has no videos of the wedding, and threatened my husband. He threatened him and had called sheriff, the sheriff came. Now, there's a picture showing that my husband was threatened by one of the security guards. So, let's fast forward. A Facebook post that was brought to my attention. So, it was brought to my attention because this nutrition, Patty, and Phil's daughter said, about my husband. Yeah, but, yeah, but he'll get what the security guards mean enough. So, we're getting threatened. We're getting threatened. We're getting out of the.
This.
This is very relevant to this, because we live very across the room. We don't feel safe. How would anybody take that, yeah, but he'll get what the security guards mean enough? From the person that you're going against publicly because you're trying to do a wedding when you were frustrating them? I don't know what else to say. I don't know what else to say.
This is a legal issue between you and the police department, and you filed it. This is not pertaining to the application here. And and we've heard the violations, and we've heard this testimony prior to this. Kick me under the table if you think I'm doing whatever.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Did you say proper room Friday?
Right.
So, there's another party Friday night also besides the wedding?
When they were setting up the barn, they had the barn doors wide open. And they were playing some type of music that was probably related to, I don't know.
There was a little sound set.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't think I can back there, but this is David from my court. I don't know what this is. How, how is this allowable? This is Friday night. Friday night. Where were the cooms? They weren't coming on this Friday night. This is what I heard Friday night. So, if you guys can fix the band, it's due to twelve because you have to do this on Friday night and Saturday. If you give them twelve, it's due to twenty-four because it's a Friday night and Saturday night. So, please take that into consideration because this is what we go through on a Friday night. I can play video from Saturday as well.
Thank you.
Hi.
Yes, your name, please.
My name's Kate Exner, and I live in five seventy-seven Ulster Ridge Road. I just, I wanted to kind of, um, about what, I can't remember her name. She's been she's been there for four years. Because her husband is her girlfriend in Ulster Heights. Yeah, my husband's grandfather grew up in Ulster Heights, lived in Cape Water School. And, um, I just would like to say that the whole whole feel of Ulster Heights varies through all farmland, quiet states. And which is why her husband and I bought this grandparent's house because we're going to raise our kids there for ever, I hope. So, this is a residential quiet area, and I'm sure that if the buses were an issue, and they're loud, and they are, I know. But, uh, added with the buses, a wedding on top of that would be, I couldn't imagine sleeping there next door to a wedding. Like, we do, but I mean, she's running the house and he has an event. How does that work exactly? I don't even know. If there's a long-term run-up for the summer, he has weddings there, what do they do? I have nothing yet. Uh, sorry, I'm getting off back there. So, as she said, she doesn't live here anymore, and still doesn't live in Ulster Heights. And the sound guy doesn't live in Ulster Heights. What do you, lives in Ulster Heights? No. So, all of these things that he's saying and planning, and they're saying and planning, it's all great because it's just a weekend for them. It's just one day for them. This is every weekend for us. This is potentially every weekend for us, Friday and Saturday night. And I understand that, that a wedding is a big deal, and it's like, I mean, you dream about it your whole life. You want everything to be perfect. You want your dress to be perfect. You want the venue to be perfect. And I'm not taking away from the fact that it's a beautiful barn, and it's a beautiful house. They're beautiful. It's not a wedding venue. They're beautiful, but it shouldn't be there. It shouldn't be a wedding venue in residential area at all. Breaking the law. And she doesn't care. And the last wedding they had, there were, I counted thirty cars in the parking lot across my house. And I could hear his security guards talking about us, about the neighbors he's meeting. And I could hear Mr. Coombes, when he joined in with his security guard, I heard what he said too. And through my kitchen windows, right there, there's nothing in between my kitchen windows and the parking lot. I could hear everything. Like, word for word, everything. So, while I understand that the people who made work for him or helped him on these events think that this is funny, think that this is a joke, think that it's not that serious, it's very serious. It's not funny. I'm, we're talking about every weekend. I mean, what's, what's the wedding season? It's, it's the summer and the fall, right? Everybody wants to get married. Everybody comes here in the fall because it's gorgeous up here. Of course, it's gorgeous up here. You know, but to allow this to go on, it's just, he's already done it, just breaking the law. You guys are already hoping to stop waiting and keep up doing it, and there's nothing happening, nothing happening. This has been a four, like you said, it's been going on for four months. And he's still doing what he wants, and you guys are like, well, we'll see you next month, and we'll try again. So, I just, I just don't know why we're still doing that. And I don't understand why it's even on the table for him to get six events or four events or two events. He should have no events. There should be no events there. And I just don't know why we're still doing this. And all of these meetings are together, and I don't know what's going on. So, um, that's, I mean, you guys have heard us for the last four months, so there was really nothing else. But I can, uh, thank you.
Does any board member have anything? We still have people?
I was just going to say, if you would like me to, I don't know if you want me to or not, but, um, when we rented there, we rented there extensively during the summer. But, um, when they had an event at Wager Farm, we didn't. And, um, you know, it could be, we were there on, I'm going to say Friday night when they're setting up. Um, but, um, when they had the event, it was our understanding that they rented the part of the house that we were in as well. So, we would leave, we would go to my daughter's kitchen, Dave's, or someplace for a day. And, um, we were, um, you know, we were happy to be able to rent there. So, we accommodated there in Wager, Wager, Wager. So, that's the end.
Thank you. Mr. Most.
Tom's closing up, five forty, Ulster Heights Road, directly across from this nightmare. So, I'm just going to read what I have. It is relevant, so there's language, but it's what, it has to be said, because you understand what's happening. So, here we go again. Another event down. By the way, we didn't just deal with it on Saturday. We dealt with it all day Friday. Phil wasn't out there all day Friday. Music blasting, barn doors wide open Friday and Saturday all day. Let me be clear, all day, barn doors wide open. Drunks from the wedding, actually, a party, as they walked up to the wedding venue, chanted, "Your mother's a whore." As they walked right down the road, calling us assholes. At the end of the night, when the sheriff was on our property taking our statements, the people leaving the wedding were screaming from the road to the front of my house, "See you later assholes." And that's fine. The police were present. They took the report. We have a copy of the report. Because I was threatened by his security, his parking attendant. So, let me pose a question to the board. As this is clearly evident, he has no control over guests. Who's going to be responsible if one of these drunken people come across the property, assault someone, a family member, a neighbor, a kid, whatever, because they don't like what we're doing on our property? That is relevant, okay? Yes, the neighbors did yard work on August seventh. And you know what? We have the right to do yard work any day between seven and ten p.m. And that's something Mr. Coombes should know, anything important, I care. End of story, period, yard work. We're likely want to on our property. Just like today, Phil had yard work. Landscape crews everywhere, chainsaws all day long, weed whackers, lawn mowers, the whole night, all day, standing over there. And you know what? That's fine. Bar for course. We're a residential neighborhood. We're not going to play. They're doing yard work. Let's be clear. Everything he has done up to this point requires an event venue permit, in which he has none, zero. He's done everything, three weddings, and a rager party with no permission or no permit. And that is fact. That is clear as day, okay? He's not followed any direction by this planning board. And he's getting away with it because people are turning their heads and putting a blind eye to it. And the people that are trying to do the right thing, you all have this letter. Phil Coombes has this letter. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but this is from Mary Lou. Returning, you're returning, okay?
In the capacity for the planning board, not on the, I'm sorry, the building department.
From the building department, representative of the building department, sent to Phil on August fourth. Please be reminded that wedding receptions and other event required approval from the town of Warston Planning Board. Your application for the same is currently before the planning board for consideration, but has not been approved. Events including weddings, receptions have not been approved for this site. And the same cannot be held at this site unless and until the event venue permit is issued by the building or the planning board. And the premises are brought into compliance with all New York State and local laws and regulations. Please refrain from holding events at Wager Farm location at this time. August fourth, Phil Coombes. August seventh, way.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Your name, sir?
Jay Beinberg. So, I'd like to put up a couple of statements that happened here tonight. Yes, in fact, I am a person of the state, and yes, I do represent the state. Um, but, stated that the property was sold and that it's true, that, that. That, that thinking is not adequate. The sale on that property was destroyed by neighbors who were making very obscene comments. And the whole public, it's a gay couple that wanted to buy the property. And as soon as that came out, it became a problem, which was never a problem. It was only a gay couple. They have since, um, way, ground, property is not under contract. We gave the deposit back, which is the right thing to do. Second, August seventh, wedding. I personally volunteered to park cars to make sure there's no problem on that road. I was there the whole time. I had no time with anybody, uh, spoken to in any manner that was less than polite in that parking lot. We had a lot of noise. There was wood chipper going into the wedding. And there was chainsaws going into the wedding. There was a lot of disrespectful activity going on for the poor bride, who I felt was terribly sorry for. What a sweet girl, having a wedding day ruined by this ridiculous stuff. That was really, really sad. In fact, I think she spoke in front of this board the last time, uh, there was a meeting. Anyway, um, just wanna clear up those facts and make sure that, um, people know that those, that that event was held, August seventh specifically, as I can speak to. That it happened. But I will tell you, that was very well organized, very clean. Nobody misbehaved. That was just wrong.
Thank you.
I have a question. Who said the whole public thing? Said a neighbor?
I don't know.
I, it's, it's-
Excuse me. You can talk about that now, sorry.
I just sit around.
Yeah, it's not issue. I think that you have something-
If I may add one thing?
Yes, please. Your name again, please?
Oh, sorry, it's Neil Frishberg.
Frishberg.
Frishberg, like fish with an R. Um, so, now, Mr. Flinberg says that if the sale is no longer pending, um, I think that is word, um, that it's no longer pending. But what he didn't say, and what I think is true, because this is marketing, the property was sold. So, my statements earlier are the same. That if you're relying on Mr. Coon to be the steward of the property, you can't. Because it's his intention to sell it. And I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to figure out that if he gets the, uh, special permit, the property value goes up. And we can deal with marketing this stuff. Second, um, there is, and I'm sort of confused. This is the line thirteen twenty twenty-one, um, notice telling him that he can't do anything. It says, uh, we, Robin Coleman and Frank Wood, quote, enforcement, and further, further, and so by notice of violation of the community twenty twenty-one relating to the premises of five forty Alter Heights Roads, except for the dark state, which is the town of Port. It would be in our opinions for imminent peril to life and property. For the following facts. There were sliding doors which are difficult to slide or operate in which have no magnetic-
Sir, those were addressed earlier in the meeting and the hour is late and we have got other venues before us. If you're going to repeat, we, we've heard it.
I just wanna make sure those are the items that you're trying to-
Okay, thank you.
Finally, I would ask, is there gonna be a discussion whether or not it's a public hearing? I think you should, for a number of reasons.
Thank you.
Um, you, there are a number of documents that were recently submitted that we need to get an opportunity to say.
They've been posted on the town's website. They are available and we will address those issues in a few minutes. Does anyone on the board have anything to say?
I have one question.
Quick.
There was a letter written from your guy's attorney, I'm sorry, the building inspector's attorney, that said that no more events were going to transpire until you all collectively make the decision. I'm gonna surprise you. I live in the town.
In your name, please?
I'm Paul Pinkers.
Paul Pinkers.
I know this, being a local resident, right? I love what Phil did. It is absolutely gorgeous. Okay? I know that I tried to beautify my home, but at the time, uh, another, um, building inspector was, was in charge. And I know when I went against that building order with the same letter that I got at Christmas Eve, they were sure to show up at my house and put a stop work order out. Okay? So, what my point is, we all pay taxes in this town. We all put our shoes on the same way. Hell, we all go to work. Most of us go to work, some of us stay home and the other ones take care of them. It's okay. I'm not judging nobody here. But what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Can I address that?
That's it. You guys make your own decision based on what I just said or not?
I'd just like to address, a lot of people have been saying, nothing's being done about it. That's an assumption that you're making? I can't really talk more in detail. However, building department is working on things. And that's all I'm gonna say. But assumptions are being made that-
There was a letter after.
Perhaps.
After the letter, I don't know.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's why, that's all I've worked it out. I know if it was me, there would definitely never have been a letter. I know that. And not, not the wedding.
Does the board feel that they have enough evidence from the sound system? Or would they like to take a measurement from the closest property line? Because that is within our scope of-
Yeah, our, our noise law says at the closest property line. And while I understand what both experts are saying, it's probably gonna be less fair. That's what the law is. So, I'm gonna make a recommendation to you before you, you close the public hearing or anything. And that would be not by live music, but, but we get a, a report by, you know, we can be some synthetic thing as to what it's gonna be.
Yeah, if I remember right, it was supposed to be an independent, non-wedding, uh, party.
Yeah, yes.
And, and I, I broke this up last time, I broke this up again. I'd like to have a, uh, north, decimals, right at the source. You can, you can extrapolate that out, you know, from what-
And we, we could ask our noise expert, you're still here, right?
Yes.
And, um, and, and Mr. Baird perhaps speak after this meeting, get together and, and get us that, that updated report that-
We would need that report, but-
Wait, what I'd recommend is-
Just letting you know, Taylor, are you, are, are you able to, Garris, I see your face.
I know, I have a mask on.
He can't, he says he's hearing some members of the board and not some others. But-
Okay.
The two of you are talking.
He's hearing, he's listening, so.
Taylor, what, I'm Mary Lou Christian, I'm the, the attorney for the planning board. What I'm suggesting is that our law does say that the readings should be at the nearest property line to the, the source of the sound. Ms. Dr. Lonstein is asking that we also get, um, a reading at the actual source. My recommendation would be that you and Mr. Baird, or someone from your firm and Mr. Baird, um, get together if, in the next couple of days, um, and work on getting that done and being reviewed by both of you, those two items, the at-the-source and at-the-nearest property line, but not with live music, with a simulation. Um, and get that back to this board by, in two weeks. What's that, September first?
September fifth.
And then, I would recommend that the town, that the planning board post that on the website. So, people from the public could see. We could close the public hearing tonight, except leave it open for written comments until one week before our meeting. So, that would be September fourteenth. So, that gives everyone from the public and your experts two weeks to review and get comments in. Gives all the planning board members a week before our next meeting to look everything over. And then perhaps you'll be ready to make a decision at your next meeting. Perhaps not. After the fourteenth, you'll have sixty-two days to make a decision.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Does that work for, for Taylor and for Mr. Baird?
And what are we supposed to do when we continue the wedding?
Excuse me, we're, we're talking.
And I think you-
Yeah.
Mr. Baird?
Yeah.
Taylor, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the noise source in- No, no, I, I, thank you, thank you very much. We're at the closer, yeah, we've done it correctly. It's further distance to Lawrence than it is to, to, to- Um, the, the line stayed at fourteen feet. Okay, that's from here to there. Okay, that's it. Woods and shrubs. Side of the barn. Wall. DJ and, and, um, guests at the far end. That's even further away. The noise source is further away from the other property line that's claimed to be, not, they could be closer.
Okay, when we were talking before, you said, well, we did it here because we thought that's where it'd be noisy. You didn't say it's a closer line. So, that's confusing today.
That, that measurement, um, I'm going from, from the map.
Can you please come here?
Sure.
And can you point to our attorney? This is the property where you were standing when you did this test.
And the barn door's here. Solid wall. Property line. Beesman line. It's a property, property line?
Solid line, property.
The barn door is here, has some practice in it. It has some practice in it. And it's a direct shot. DJ is here in the barn. The guests are here, here. So, by being here, I should know.
No, I, I understand that. But I, I don't know.
Same distance.
There you go, Jonathan, come on over with your measuring thing. I don't have my.
Pass it down.
I know, one thing I would like, if you could ask Taylor, um, would, uh, measurement, if it was off quite a few feet, be different?
When I went to your school, they always said the cherry is with you at all times.
Where is it?
So, either direction, we need to know.
Understood. What is the, uh, what is the scale of this drawn?
Now, what I need to know is what's closer, this line or this?
Forty foot.
Forty, forty scale.
And she puts forty?
Yep.
Don't put the barn wall, it was inside, there's a loft there and it's about- Well, this corner of the barn is fifty-eight feet from that line. And this wall of the barn is sixty-five feet from this property line. If, if, the only other question- You weren't measuring from the noise source, you're measuring from the corner of the barn. But I, I, wait, but wait a second. But it's not, because the noise source is right here. Is this, Mary Lou? I was measuring from this fence line. Is, is this the line?
Which is the property line here?
Solid line.
It's the overlap parcel, it says, so I don't know.
So, the solid line is here.
The solid line, it, it, that's really, I think we're supposed to be doing this, which is a hundred and seven feet from the corner.
What does overlap parcel mean?
I was playing it.
Thank you.
When the survey was done, after purchase of property two thousand fourteen, it says on a note in upper part-
Would you like to show?
Tell you that there was a-
You got it done.
At that description of that fifth, what quit-
Right.
Is in both Lawrence deed and the Wager Coon deed. But there is a transfer document that shows the transfer of that property nineteen fifty-nine from the previous owner, which was the previous Lawrence, to Wager, or to, Wager or Act, one of the, I think, a Wager. So, it's his opinion that it is our property, which is why he drew the line where he did.
And it is stamped by a licensed surveyor. Uh, and this, and this solid line is the, is the, is considered the property line, but then he, but then he has a note.
Who's paying taxes on it?
Huh?
Who's paying the taxes?
I am. Here, it's, look at note three. Okay.
There, note three. The point five nine acre deed overlap parcel-
What is the tax, uh, parcel map?
Tax, tax maps are- Not a hundred percent.
Our inherent count.
We're reading the note on the licensed surveyor stamped document.
Excuse me, we're-
You can come up if you'd like.
Not really.
Oh, okay.
Not really.
The town board is talking about this now, I think. The fifty nine, the point fifty-nine acre deed overlap parcel shown herein is one contained in the needs and bounds description in both the Coon deed and the Lawrence deed. This parcel was described in a deed from Allworth Realty Corporation, previous owner of the Lawrence chain of title, to Carol J. Wager and Mabel Wager, previous owner of the Coon chain of title, dated June second, nineteen fifty-four, recorded in the Elster County Clerk's Office in library of eight ninety-four, page four eighty. It is this surveyor's opinion that the overlap is part of the Coon parcel, not the Lawrence parcel, and therefore is included within the needs and bounds of the survey. Okay, so we have a certification with explanation that this is the line, which would be-
Farther than the front line along-
Right, there's a D. A D to that, recorded.
Because it's a hundred and ten feet to the side and about, sorry, Rob, and-
It's okay.
And-
It was like sixty two. We didn't have this problem before.
And I would think, I'd rather see that, uh, in the Alter Heights Road anyway, because the doors are there. I'm basing that-
And he said, was it there?
And it looks like that is closer from the survey. Yeah, so, okay. Thank you. We do, absolutely. Yeah, so-
Second part.
Given that, I don't know that you leave another noise study, because
Yeah.
it, it appears that it wasn't the closest line, as well as the loudest line.
Right.
Um, according to both, both noise experts.
We can talk about the maximum. You had mentioned the max of the level inside as part two of that. Well, you know, it's a nice, it's a nice, and I'd agree. The next time I do something, maybe I'll be able to do that. But, um, a rock, like, the typical common noise, if I can tell you right now, there was two hundred decimals inside at the wedding, but it was still sixty-three at the property line. That's really what happens. It wasn't two hundred, that everybody would have permanent hearing damage. A rock band's about a hundred and ten. I estimate that it was probably about a hundred in there, it's loud. But again, the doors, it was sixty-three at the property line, closest.
That's the, that's the line our law says we, we look at. I understand what you wanna know, Paul, but I-
Everybody around this property was not watching. And being that there's also an independent study, it would be nice to have right baseline and at that point, to let this, you know, discussion of this is done. This is, you know, I feel sometimes that if this went to ZBA, this is something new's hardship, it wouldn't even be in front of us right now. But, but, you know, we're trying to get all the information from everybody, from, and it's a beautiful place. It is a beautiful place. You know, short-term rental or the Airbnb, whoever, it's a beautiful place. A wedding venue, I'd like to get more information. I'd like to hear, see what that numbers are from there to the point. Dumbly. And then if it's fine, hope people agree on it. I, then we kind of think, if we get more information, we can move forward on this. If it's not true, then we have more information, we can move on. That's how I feel. I'm only one person. West of the board.
I guess, I'm, I'm not understanding, um, the purpose-
Purpose of adding the noise levels in style. Okay. So being that we get all the points with this, with the sound, that we property lines and stuff, my opinion, scientific studies, look at the source. You gotta know source. So we don't know if the source was a hundred or a hundred and fifty. You know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying, but. What?
Okay, so you're saying you want to know how loud it is inside, but it's making it sixty-three decibel.
If you're a hundred at the source in the barn, it may be sixty at the line. You know, a hundred and thirty at the source, it's gonna be ninety. Okay. Well, ninety is above our seventy-three, right? But what is that? How does that help us? Do you say?
Well.
Because our, our, our law is that it cannot exceed seventy-three here. That's how it helps us. We don't, we don't care what's going on there, but we should.
I, I think what he's saying is, it's hard to sound good in sorority meetings, I think what he's saying, is, um, that the measurement on the line is really dependent upon how loud that music is at the source.
Right.
So he's saying, we'd like, in order to, to properly consider this sixty-three or sixty-eight decibels, we have to make sure it wasn't only eighty decibels in sound.
And that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay, I got you. I understand. Thank you. Thank you.
I can help you with that too, very easily. Uh, in the report, I put an equation in there and how, uh, decibels are attenuated within distance. Well, they're also increased over distance too. So if we're at sixty feet and we have sixty-three, we can go thirty feet closer, we add six, that's sixty-nine, correct Taylor?
That's correct.
And then we go to fifteen feet, we get seventy-five. Are we good?
Uh, I'm not trying to hear math, but I.
Okay. We go down to seven feet, we're at eighty-one. We go down to three and a half feet, we're at eighty-seven. We go down to zero, we're at ninety. There you go.
Okay, so good. What is the, what's the typical sound level of a ninety?
Ninety. So ninety, ninety.
Would you, would you concur with that at a wedding, that ninety at the, at the source?
Jay, go, Taylor?
That's correct.
Would you say ninety decibel at the source for a DJ or a live band?
Uh, do you know, I actually have experience doing it, monitoring your, 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 your actions.
I can't hear you.
Put it outside.
Thank you.
It's not a relation mix.
Yes.
You can erase what you said.
Study that I submitted. Go back.
So. Does the board wish to discuss with the attorney? Do you want to move forward with additional?
I think if you're not gonna look for more noise study, it would be appropriate.
I think we still.
Hey, Mary, that we still need for the applicant to pose mitigation, but.
Wait, that, that doesn't, has nothing to do with the public, right?
It's no.
So, uh.
I didn't hear Mary.
I said that seeing as these noise issues have now been clarified, sounds like you're not looking for further noise reports, in which case it would be appropriate to press all of the. Someone would like to make that motion, if, if you all agree.
Was there any, was there any, wasn't anything else on the traffic?
Unless anyone has any further questions, come on. They have responded by providing attorney movement, diagram, and they, and they're going to have a parking attendant's work permit signed, uh, which is what, for the things that Behr had asked for most recently, uh, in all of other, Behr's other issues to take care of.
You may want to close the public hearing.
I think, I'll entertain a motion. I'll take an.
I, I'll make a motion, let me close the public hearing. I think we've heard the issues that the public are concerned with, uh, we didn't really hear anything, uh, really new today. So I think, I think we've heard from the public and we know their concerns. So I think to move this forward is, I would make a motion, let me close the public hearing.
Do you?
Yes, motion by Mr. Schmaltz, seconded by Dr. Lowenstein. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We need to discuss.
Narinate?
Yeah.
Do you want to think about this for a month? You have sixty-two days to make a decision.
We could incorporate everything that was been discussed tonight in a motion and a resolution.
Well, I guess in order to, to write a resolution, we could consider the next meeting, it would be helpful, I mean, I could leave it open until next meeting, but the issue of the number of events and the issue of when, whether you require plant, planting and that.
Needs to discuss.
Does the board wish to continue discussion or wait until next month?
I would, personally, I would like to discuss them, get them out on whether we make a decision or not. I think it's, it's something we need to discuss and the sooner the better.
Let's deal with the plantings. Uh, we have three trees on the property. I did not, Jonathan, when we were there today, did you notice them? Because I didn't.
Honestly, um, the county suggested, um, planting, but I do believe that if there's a certain, uh, headlights typically when you plant that, it's.
To mitigate the headlights, we could ask the app, uh, the attendees attending to back into the parking lot rather than to drive in.
Or given that it's a grass area without lines, they could, they could drive in forward, swing around. I need to ask, I wouldn't want to ask twenty people to back up, probably seven of them.
Well, well, on, on that anyway, if they backed in, they would be, the lights would be shining off.
Yeah.
By pulling in, it's, it's heading right towards the barn. So it's within the property.
That's so, but absolutely no work.
So I, I personally think that the landscaping that's there, uh, mitigates the concern of the residents of light splashing onto their houses and so on from traffic where we can mitigate it. We're still gonna have light splashing off the property at the driveways, which there really is no mitigation for that. The driveways are there, uh, and can't put portable plant there every time somebody goes out. So I don't see any mitigation on that in the same way over on Marcus, um, you know, the same thing. So I think, personally, I think the landscaping, the lighting plan, with the exception of, I think the one posts, heights posts were, did that get changed? I thought there was, it was supposed to be ten feet and I see they're still on year twelve.
They're, they're gonna be, if you want them to ten, they'll be a ten.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we noted that, you said they were like.
A ten and they.
Ten in one place, but still twelve in the other.
Yeah.
Both ground versus what's both. Both, both tens or both.
Override the county, um, the plant.
I would also ask, since we have another one, that, that you, if you're inclined to make a motion to override the county's comment for, on the basis that the, the maples that are planted are adequate and that the parking attendants will make sure the headlights are facing the barn, when cars park, but I'd like to have those maple shown on the landscape plan.
I will entertain a motion from what he said.
Override the county on Marcus.
I'll, I'll make that motion, that we override the county with the changes that have been made. I don't, I don't even know that we got to override the county. I don't know, you know, I mean, we could make it cleaner that way.
Let's just make it clean.
We'll make it cleaner. Okay, that, uh, the plantings that are shown on the plan plus the additional three maple trees, um.
To be shown on.
To be shown on the plan are sufficient and if it, if the planning board, county planning boards want it entire across, I claim that we override that request to have plantings all the way across, low plantings all the way.
And also how, uh, Jonathan mentioned, uh.
With the, with the, with the.
With headlights.
The headlights pulling into.
Interior.
Interior.
And parking.
And both, that the headlights, where the cars don't, we stop, the headlights pointing at the front.
Correct.
For the three.
Yes.
I'll entertain a second.
Well, we have a motion.
We have a motion. We have a motion. A second.
Oh, that's, sorry, the motion was by.
Donna.
Donna Swanson?
Yes.
Discussion.
We need a second before we discuss. If we don't get a second, we can table it till the next meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Now we can.
Now the discussion.
We can, whichever way this goes. So it's varying, overriding, can be, that could also.
Well, if you have a reason, if you have a, if you're coming with mediation, it should be fun. Just override saying we don't like it is one thing, but you need, given the reasoning in that motion.
So it's reasoning and potential lawsuit on either side.
Hey, you know what? I think that tonight everything is a potential lawsuit for me, so. You know? I'm, I'm sorry, Paul, I'm gonna give you my standard answer.
No, no.
Nine to five, Monday through Friday, anybody can sue for anything at any time. Doesn't mean they're gonna be successful. So we're gonna do the best.
Planner answer. That's not a word. The planner answer is, after many years of watching the county deal with this, that happens. If, if you have horrible decent, decent reason.
Reason.
That's fine.
Lights and trees. The lighting would be at ten feet.
Regardless of county.
Yeah, that's what you meant.
Is it ever that?
Cars parked with lights towards the vine. Cars parked with lights towards the vine, lights, exterior lights at ten feet, um.
The three maple trees.
Maple trees.
Show on the plan.
Show them on the plan.
And the height of the luminary changed.
Okay, so that's a motion and we have this second and we have some discussion and no discussion.
On the discussion and the motion.
Why don't you do this on board, Paul, even though you don't have access, just because you want, you know, you need height to override, so you wanna.
Call, vote.
Make sure you have an accurate.
On the motion, Dr. Lowenstein.
The information I got also, yes.
Mr. Hart. Mr. Schmaltz.
Yes.
Mr. Alexandria.
I would say no.
We need to proceed. Mr. Wood?
No, we can't do it.
Please recuse. Mr. Constable says yes.
We do not overload, but we're gonna have to do those plantings.
You have item four in front of you.
Yeah, I guess we're great, yeah. We can not override.
Oh. If you can't find it, I think, I can get it.
That's what I was saying before. I was just dragging, would you like me to read it?
Yeah, we've got a term, yes, please.
Okay, sure. So, um, I'll read the whole thing and I guess the required modifications to do that are made contact. The slide number fourteen, buffer and landscaping, the town special event law provides plenty facility to require, require associated buffers between the event and the surrounding property. Existing parking lot near Market Road, no buffers between the roads, parking road, or this area of supposed parking in front of the existing barn. Meanwhile, the proposed parking area in the southern portion of the property is here entirely included with no modifications or carrying the actual device or equipment. Required modifications. To achieve the buffering and landscaping goals that will help to prevent off-strengthened impact, the use of burn and landscaping in front of the proposed barn area, parking and existing parking lot, and a long market itself should be required. Use of street trees, native species, consistent with that already on site, provided site systems are unstructured, if recommended. For those portions in the development where there is existing vegetation, conservation acres, or at a minimum, a static site, we are initiating that a sufficient portion of the existing vegetation is to remain in, to maintain and have a proper. I believe that the statement that Paul was talking about is the first sentence, the required modifications, which is to achieve the operating landscaping goals that will help reduce off-strengthened impact, the use of burns and landscaping in front of the proposed barn area, parking and existing parking lot, adjacent market, turtle, or market itself should be required. And I, I'm speaking for you, distracting.
Okay.
Correct, um, but I believe you were about to say, it doesn't say specifically, you know, what type of anything is supposed to be there, it's then recommending the use of burns and landscaping. I was in this before, that there has been there being that. All there, it doesn't specify, it might not pay a head row. I understand that that might be over the business, but that's not the requirement, required modification itself, but it don't mean that the override order to, to revisit that would need to, to, um, to override that, that like, that was in there, over, but it had, it's to, assuming that that would be a, so.
And I, I think that the reason why I started down, you know, is that those maple trees are not on the plan.
Yes, I'm listening very carefully.
So when I looked at the plan, there's no plants down there. And it's the landscaping.
I'll tell you why, I'll tell you why I said no. If, if you wanna, if you wanna hear it. Uh, we had a couple camps in front of us and we worked on Osterhead Road and we made down plants. A lot of trees. Not even for noise, just for not seeing the garbage or seeing anything over there. We made, it wasn't the camps on Osterhead Road and Geiger Road actually. We made all of them to plant the plants. So no, yes. Yes, we did. For rainbow, we did. I know exactly, yes, we did. Right? In the front of, on the left side.
No.
I love it. We went with you on the inspection.
I can talk.
I see when.
But, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying that we did that for every. Yes.
And that's all open with no division, no plantings, no trees. On the left and right-hand side, between the camp and the neighbor, we required a buffering of trees.
Right.
Because of the bus turnaround and the bus not allowed to park on Geiger Road or any of those public roads. I know what you're gonna say, they still do, but.
Yeah, they do.
They still do my property process.
But it was designed that they could pull off the road, onto the grass or into a stoned area and park, and that was what we moved on. But to buffer the neighbors, we required trees and shrubbery. That's the way I understand those particular camps.
Okay.
But, uh, what they're asking here is, is for something along the road. And if you just drive by, both sides of the road. both sides of the road are giving, both sides, and, uh, it's, my feeling is that we have become super sensitive to issues because of COVID. And I live on fifty-two, I hear trucks, I hear motorcycles, I sit on my back porch, and I hear them go by all the time. Prior to a year of August, a year ago, I didn't know the difference. But in August of last year, I could sit on my porch, not hear anything. Today, a motorcycle or a truck with a gl- glass pack on its, on its, that drives me nuts. And I'm super sensitive to the fact that I hear that now, and I'm just sitting outside my house. Now, let alone trying to sleep at night and hearing these motorcycles go by. I think that is all of us in a nutshell. I, but in this particular case, would, should, they put up trees, a firm, hiding the barn doors, would that be of effect? What you're saying is, that should be done. The county's saying, they didn't specify. And because they didn't specify what should be put up, tulips would be.
Pretty.
Pretty, and could be put there as a buffer for the sound, and of course, that is ridiculous, but he has put three trees.
So I guess I'd like to do that.
So.
Given this. What landscaping you do.
Still looking, hear you.
No, you can't, I can't hear you. See, three layers.
Yeah, three.
You have to discuss what, um, landscaping you do or do not want. Why don't you just discuss that, if are those three trees gonna be sufficient, or do you need more?
My opinion is the trees are fine. With, with the, with the conditions of, of, of pulling cars in, you have to be exact. Because I don't see, because listening to that, it was basically at the parking lots to keep the lights on the property, hiding. Um, I think.
So we need that shown on the map.
Correct.
It is landscaping.
Correct.
But, yeah, I think that if you were going to face the lights toward the barn, it would be a different situation.
Agreed.
I have maple trees all over my backyard, and trust me, you'd see the headlights.
Exactly, exactly. And, um, yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
I have no bit of trouble doing this thing.
So Eric, do you have maple trees?
Well, it's okay, because even if you're not overruling it, if you're saying we have sufficient there, then you're complying with it.
Right.
But then we're gonna comply with it, and that overrules town.
Right.
Okay.
Then maybe, uh, Eric, should the buffer and secondary, that's all, all did not require.
No, because they said they're not going to. They're not overriding it.
They're not overriding.
They're saying that the landscaping with the light is sufficient to meet that condition.
But if the motion has passed, then we say.
No. It failed, so they're not overriding it.
But, but.
But they're saying that with the trees being shown on the map and with the lights facing the barn, and with the, the, um, poles going down to ten feet rather than the twelve feet, that is sufficient to meet that.
I guess.
That condition that we did not override.
I, I was just thinking that maybe it would be another motion without overriding.
That can be part of whatever they put in their decision.
Okay.
If, if they should approve it, that would be conditioned in the decision.
And to modification three, the, uh, parking requirements have been dropped to a hundred and ten for people attending. So that would be about fifty-five cars, they meet that, that standard, so there is no need.
No overriding.
No need to override number three. Um, planting, uh, yeah, we did that.
Events, I mean, events. So, you know, this is not.
I guess the, the other question is, uh, the applicant stated in one of their submissions for this meeting, that they would be willing to less than eight, therefore, here.
Personally, I don't with the, um, outcry of public opinion. I would, I would, my suggestion would be ten to eight. That would be, uh, basically May, June, March of July, so a month and a half of events every weekend. Um, so it's, you know, what, four hours of event, forty hours, maybe ten, forty hours over an entire year.
And I think it's very important to note, several people said that this event that they should not have had was actually two days. If something's two days, if you're taking a day for, that's two events.
Right.
So I, I think that's really important to know, and that's what we did in yoga vida.
In yoga vida, we said that if you, you could set up the day before. You can set up the day before.
Okay.
And that would still be, that, that would still be considered.
If guests were saying they're right, and then one event, yep.
Right. Correct.
But it's not an all-day party, it's a setup, it's not, yes, if.
Correct.
And, and in this particular case, you're not setting up a tent, you're not bringing in chairs, you're not doing that, so really, they shouldn't be.
The only thing would be decorating. Yeah, you know.
I just wanna point out, the news raised the incident, and so I felt that set up, it's an hour showing, it's maybe an hour. Yeah, they may, uh, set up that in that list, so we are, so we're, so we're, so we're, so we're, so we're.
Right.
Hours of operation.
I also believe that the events law says twelve events a year.
Correct.
And, and it gives you the.
But the option for more or less.
Or less, right, you have the option to go either direction.
I'd entertain half, I'd entertain, they want eighteen. What we can do is we could limit it to a review, a review in one year after September, October.
Yes, it's an option.
It's an option.
You can set the renewal period for year, two years, three years, your choice.
But remember, on the renewal period, should you say we're gonna revisit this in a year, two years, whatever? The revisiting doesn't mean you pull it unless they are in violation. And if they are in violation, they have, how long, Jonathan, to?
Sixty days.
Sixty days to come into the.
Also, if you say nine events a year, and you review it, you can't go down to six. You can start with six and go up, but you can't.
Well, you can go up if they apply.
If they apply for more.
They would have to apply for an.
But you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't be, you couldn't, yeah, you couldn't reduce.
The events.
Right, unless, unless they were non-compliant, and they did not comply within sixty.
Correct, then you can shut it down.
Then you can shut the whole thing down, you can.
The other, the other thing that I looked at when I was considering that is by our law, they could have two hundred and fifty-five guests. They chose to reduce, cut that to more than half. So therefore, the effects on the neighbors are, is less. Um, I look at, I look at the law, and I, I interpret that to say, this is probably one of the better places to have it, where you have large, deep parcels of land. The event is near traffic access, a county road and a town road, it's right on the corner. So some of those things mitigate some of the concerns that we typically have of cramming too much into a small space and not being able to get in and out. Those are two of the major issues. Sound is also another one, which, again, larger parcels of property, sound attenuates with distance. It isn't as if, you know, there's houses on both sides, three houses across, all those sorts of things, so, um, you know, other things have, are in this application that make it more palatable to me in that they're not trying to go for the maximum. And, but I also think that we should reduce the maximum number of vents because of the public out.
Going off of that, I would like to suppose something, you could talk on anything about that, under event law does.
Yeah.
Um, you know, contribution of additional perfect parties, maybe shower, whatever, that are clearly not the focus of the public outcry, obviously, for their, um, their, their event. Um, we just, especially currently, like to propose that, essentially, for, 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 kind of that, if only needed those two weddings, two others, anything else that's not made on the event law. Anything else that's complicated on the event law, obviously, the board, um, town, you know, ahead of time, because those individual members, you know, station, um, their event, they had, obviously, they were ahead of time, just looking at, you know, state of show, sort of, um, that would be, um, more than a, um, in play. That would be about, um, that would be, to events, but go right, you have to allow for it, each other, our, 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 our.
Now, this is a little bit different to... If, okay, this is just for instance, somebody rents the entire house and throws a party, and they go across the site. How, how is the applicant protected from...
This events law is for events that you are charging.
Okay.
Phil can have, Patty can have private parties there, because they own it, as long as people aren't paying...
As long as people come to rent the house and have a party, that's not a bad thing.
If, no, it's not, unless they're...
No, they...
For what?
Again, anyone who rents a house is allowed to do what anyone else who owns or rents any other house, which is have a party. It's just that if you charge, if you put it in an internet thing for X thousand dollars. But if you have twenty, thirty people over the business, that's not, that's a party.
But if they rent the house, have a wedding, that's not a bad thing.
If, if they are paying for, yes, a, to use the event space in the house, and that's what they're paying for, that's an event. If they rent that house.
To go around that, you can try to order rent the house and have a wedding, too.
I think it's confined, I think, I...
Correct me.
If you rent the house, you're renting the house, you're not renting the barn, you're renting the house. And if I have a family reunion, and I have a hundred and ten guests there in the house and on the lawn, I haven't rented the barn as an event, nor have I got caterers, might have you cooked. But, uh, the, it's just a family party. If it's confined to, the event itself is confined to the barn, and the use of the property, and waterfalls and everything, and he's getting paid to set it all up.
Well, he may be having somebody else set it up.
That, that might be considered an event.
That might be something, you know, this is the law as it's written.
Right.
You might want to suggest that that pole be taken care of by the town.
Because I can tell you that many, many communities where our firm is engaged right from the last year, caused the Airbnb deliberation, and, and with closing the restaurants in New York City and bars, people have been renting houses up country, so to call it, and having parties at them in their Airbnb. It's been a problem. Folks have, from different communities, have adopted public law to regulate Airbnb use. And that's really a different problem, a different issue than this event law and weddings. And town or boys, you want to do that.
And it's actually the zoning, there's a zoning law out there now, as you know, zoning amendments. But that zoning committee, I believe, is going to continue, and that is one of the items in the...
I've already, I've already written, written that for free.
Yeah. Yeah, and we have recommendations from your firm, I've written a bunch myself.
Yeah, because I think when we did this law, it was thought more for like, uh, bed and breakfast.
If someone actually has a bed and breakfast, or a retreat center, or something, yeah.
Yeah, another business, not specifically for Airbnb, or home rental, or room rental, or those types of things. And I think this fits under, Sealed Place fits under this law. We didn't really consider that as accessories.
And well, this was, yeah, to address that a bit, this was given...
No.
No, that's not what...
No, that's not what I'm saying.
That's not what was said at all. Attorney tonight brought up the accessories. We take what comes to us after the building department makes its determination of what route an application has to take.
Right.
This application came to us in April, after the applicant went to the building department, and they said, no, you can't do that, you have to go to the plan. So, in sending it to us, they've made the determination that this is an accessory use. If anyone wanted to challenge that, they had sixty days from when they would have known to challenge it. And application, having been in April, public hearing, having, you know, been in July, notices have gone out, I think that that, that time has passed. So we, you know, we've had other ones where we want, but we take what we're given.
Okay.
Do we wanna move forward, or do we wanna table this until the next meeting?
If we don't have a motion on this, not really.
Oh.
Do we?
No.
No.
Hmm? He said we don't have a motion on the number of events.
Yep. I'm comfortable with six, because we can't reduce it after, and with one-year review, that one year being September, ending September two thousand twenty-two. But that's a personal throw-out, if the board wishes to consider that now, or does the board wish to consider it at the next meeting? I'll take a motion to consider it next meeting, I'll consider, take a motion to hear other people say eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, whatever, or we can move on to the next application.
Next application. So table this till the next meeting? Is that a secondary?
That's my motion.
You got a motion?
An air.
I'll second it.
Seconded by mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, so it's four one.
Four one.
Okay, so we'll take it up in September or... Party break?
A motion to take a party break?
How about if we call that a ten-minute recess?
Ten-minute recess.
Because there's gonna be a line for the party. All in favor, a motion, a second?
A motion, I'll motion. I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
We will be, we will be back at ten o'clock.
I'm in bed.
Six, what are you talking about?
After this meeting here, I'm gonna have Barbara's gonna start doing it. Because I'm really gonna consider, um... I think town board has too much influence over the ten key, and it caused me to have a lot of anxiety.
I mean, we're crossing empty teeth, I tried to get it done today, I didn't have time to come back to the park.
Did somebody do a session for a ten-minute break?
Yes, John Spals and I did it here. I seconded it. I just really wanted to...
Get it over with.
I, I, I really worked really hard to get this over with.
And then you guys said...
I know, I know.
Send blood, you said. You don't want to work with a freaking wedding.
We didn't, we didn't have, the public hearing is closed.
No.
If we wanted a sound study, did the board want a sound study? The board did not want another sound study. And because they didn't want another sound study...
They closed the public hearing, all right.
We closed the public hearing. But had they wanted another sound study, they had to produce it in two weeks, and then I gave the public two weeks to review it, and only send that rip. You won't get it, you shouldn't, and if you do, we can file it, but that's not...
There's a poor guy, there's an extra guy.
I was doing one of those later. I've been on the bar, and I saw that. It's a nightmare, it's a nightmare.
It would be done by the eighties.
I didn't know if it was gonna be the same, they're not coming.
But, uh, again, that's the guy who does...
And there's a letter, there's a letter in your thing, that they asked, they found a courtman on the front.
It just no law, I saw it.
Just make sure the board knows it, why they're not here.
And only seven blocks away, I can hear the presentation. I mean, seven, seven houses, eight houses, with the sound.
They have to do that, okay? She called me, I didn't find it angry.
Wait a second. This guy, this guy...
You be smarting? I don't know where this guy is.
Yeah, but you live in the village.
I'd say it was probably a little less.
Okay. That's why you move to Better Hands Road, you buy your house, you make everything, you live home. And after that, summer, my best friend, make it nice, and build a wedding. I can't hear, from last Saturday, I was hearing the music, and you know where I live. You know, yeah, and then you see it downstairs, I'm sorry to say, they create this law, but that's not right. I don't think it's...
I almost completely, you hear, there a noise, or the wedding noise?
Wedding noise, no, I heard everything, it was so loud. I didn't, I didn't understand at the beginning what was happening. No, I really didn't understand it.
What's your, what's your take there, bro?
I didn't, I didn't understand it. No, but it's, it's, listen, I vote for one side or another side, completely. Whatever they need with jeepers and all these, I don't think it was right, especially if the people kept waiting, and during the COVID, it was canceled, you know what I mean? I don't think it was right, you know? It's, it's no question about it. I would be...
But at the same, you know, I look at it, and I go, okay, Phil, Phil, as soon as he's done it out about the, sort of, the drive, I cannot, I cannot, because, hey. And then, and then it's all on Phil.
Listen, the property, I mean, he is very, I, I know, I mean, I remember that, that was completely shut. It was, like, completely shut.
But then you also look at, I think we have to work that issue, it's to encourage people to talk to the town, okay? What do we have in this town?
Yeah, but when the previous, previous application, we were making sure that they are like so far in the woods that no one can hear it, and no one can complain. And here, it's like pretty much down in the middle of the valley. You know, I mean, like, we just had another application, and we were making sure that it's somewhere in the woods so no one can hear it, and we can talk about it.
No, that's where it was located, we didn't want it there.
Yeah, but, come on.
The reason, the concern that we had there was traffic, trying to get traffic in it. That was a concern. And I was concerned about how it goes out, that's why I was to make, but we all have our concerns. But I said at my house, I could listen to the championship, and I was like, miles away.
But that's okay.
And they do not have shrubs, and in front of it.
And there's a difference between still, or residence.
John said, John said today that the... Four hours.
Chill. Chill.
Oh, good morning.
Oh, so he was catching one's ass.
Tell Jonathan, the cops upstairs, in case he doesn't...
What? I'm exhausted, I get it.
Yeah, see, this is, this is my second night out. Last night, I was watching The Great Kings, because Laura and John, which I was going back to games on, and I didn't get home till, I didn't get back till one thirty.
Forty-five, forty-six coming through.
Yeah, but you... Ask you for any spoils hanging out in your man.
Why?
My neighbor, Colcy State, I turned seventeen, made seventy-seven spoils, like twenty-seven, three, seventy-one, eight spoils.
I think Sarah's gonna get back in. You know how many people are...
I have found thirty-seven.
Okay.
I'm thinking, you know, Jamie, I know is in love.
Okay.
All about coming down.
I'm ready, it's ten o'clock.
She had to be, give him a couple.
Ten o'clock, three o'clock.
You, you can talk.
I'll come collect.
All right, uh, sad collective machinery. But you, awesome, something new.
Hello, everyone, I'm Bert Wayne, I'm a surveyor.
Did you fall asleep back there, Bert, or... Did you fall asleep or anything, or, I think that would have been tough to do, right?
What I do, that, I pack a couple up here, and might be easier for you to see that I kind of...
Could you please tell the board about the grain? You tell the board about the grain?
This is a little confusing, I, I scale, I had to do...
And he covered some things in for us, to help us out.
Basically, what happened was, I started to do a survey of the sad property for sale, and then I discovered that there, the neighbor of collective machinery had structures built over on the sad property. So that's how we got involved, going plot line duty. And essentially, what I've done, was to do...